Meeting number two, folks. I will call to order regular meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen. Today is January 4th, 2021. It's got to get better than 2020, but a lot of expectation on this poor little number one. We will see. I will start by saying, and I said this to John off meeting in our last meeting a year ago. John had some major health issues and then wasn't with us for the entire budget season. So, John, it sure is nice to see you here with us this time this year.
Nice to be back.
Yes. All right. So, the next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. You should have minutes from our December 21st, 2020 meeting.
I'll make a motion that the minutes of the December 21st meeting be approved as submitted.
I will second. Oh, go ahead, Liza. All right, any discussion? The, I will mention that the boiler being replaced here on the 23rd allowed Heather to work from home. And it was like a record for the minutes for her. So, completely undistracted time is kind of nice. We don't get that around here very often. So, nice job, Heather. All right. Seeing no further discussion, I will call for a vote.
Aye.
Heather, oh, sorry, we're gonna do a roll call. Yeah.
Sorry, took me a second to unmute. Blessington?
Aye.
Buritz?
Aye.
Krasinski?
Aye. The next item is present to speak. There is anyone on the call from the public that would like to speak? You should have the ability to unmute yourself. I ask you to state your name for the record and limit yourself to two minutes. Is there anyone present to speak? Seeing none, there is another opportunity at the end of our meeting for you to speak. And as always, you can reach out to the Selectmen's Office with any comments, questions, or concerns. I will move along to correspondence. You have a list of correspondence here in our office in your packet, folks. Any questions or concerns? Let's see, Liza tilting her head to read it. All right, seeing none, I'll move on to first selectmen update. I will start with the Parks and Rec Director. The Hiring Committee met last week to go over the applications that we received. And we will be conducting interviews this week, tomorrow, and Thursday for first round. And so, we'll keep you posted on how that goes. The Emergency Communications Task Force with the holidays did not meet, so I don't have an update. And I'm waiting to see from the chair when the next meeting will be. I'll give you an update. Last meeting, we talked about the mold that was discovered in the basement here of the Town Office Building. We received an air quality test back, and that was done, if you recall, by ServiceMaster. They sent that off and we got them back. There were certainly some concerning numbers in that air test. But after consulting with Karma, our insurance company, we've had a second test done. They came out on the Wednesday, the 23rd to do an additional air quality test as well as physical samples. And so, as soon as we have all that information, I will share that with you. Troy also had begun to look for additional quotes for work in the basement. And you recall that's a CIP project that we had had, but I believe it's something that we need to do sooner rather than later. We've really been struggling to get folks to answer us back. And Troy, I think, said, we had one person come out here on the 23rd. As of this afternoon, we had no state-approved vendors who were willing to bid on the job. Troy, did I hear you tell me that you have two more bids coming in?
Yep, two more actually local people that are coming tomorrow.
All right. So, once again, it's pouring that cement so that we don't have that dirt floor. Hopefully, that can mitigate any issues going forward. We're still waiting for Karma to get back to us on whether or not the document mitigation is covered under our insurance. I don't know if they're waiting for the results from Mystic Air's air quality test before, sorry, let's move more, to respond to us. But as soon as we get an answer, I will share that with you. I'm a little discouraged. Any communications seem to be generated on our end by Heather and not from them. So, as insurance companies often go, it's kind of a hurry up and wait process. So, I'll keep you posted on that. I did say we'd go back to the Board of Finance, and we had some solid concrete, pardon the pun, numbers. And they would be willing to hold an emergency meeting. We didn't anticipate that no one would get back to us. Certainly, the holidays were in there, even in these unusual times, that probably played a factor in people not responding. All right, CIP begins this week, so we'll, there'll be lots of meetings. We're meeting weekly every Wednesday until mid-February. And then, that plan will come to this board to move forward on that. So, I'll give you some updates after we begin meeting. Again, we meet this Wednesday at 6:30. The boiler, we replaced the boiler that heats most of the Town Office Building, if you recall, last Monday, and then, once again, today, we came into no heat in the finance area. It covers finance, human services, and Parks and Rec. So, last Monday, they came in Monday morning to a 50-degree office, and this morning, 52 degrees. So, the recommendation now from two vendors is that boiler has passed its life expectancy and is just hanging on as a need of replacement. I do know from Donna that we have about $40,000 favorable in our insurance line item. The majority of that is from the anticipated budget number reused last year before we had real numbers when we went. So, what I would like to do is replace that as soon as we can and not wait. What we can't have in the middle of the winter is heat, no heat. It's not about working conditions. We have concern about pipes freezing and more damage to the building than that. So, we're working to get appropriate quotes, and then, I'll seek the approval of a transfer from the Board of Finance from the insurance line item into Town Office Building Operations for that. And so, I'll keep you posted and may ask for an emergency meeting from this board. Once we receive quotes, we got one today, but I just got it late this afternoon, so I haven't had a time to really look over it. Any questions? If it's not one thing breaking around here, it's another, folks. I feel like all I do is come to you and say something else is giving way.
I do, I have one question. So, in last year's budget, we, or maybe it was two years ago even, we put aside money for, I think it was Empor to do the preventative maintenance and preventative checks. Was this something that had bubbled up that we kind of were preparing for anyway? Or is this something that was not on that list?
No, I think they've recommended that all of ours be replaced. That one wasn't at the time, wasn't as serious an issue as the first boiler that we had replaced. So, it was definitely in our plan and would have been in a CIP plan, you know, moving forward. But yeah, the fact that it, you know, we've come in another weekend. And as it worked, we're really just on pins and needles. And I've been talking to Troy today about what we could do in the meantime, because the reality is if it stops working, there are no parts available for it anymore. And I don't recall Empor telling us that when they came for their service last year. It's not in those records, but it doesn't appear we can get parts for it now. So, they did a little MacGyver-ing of, you know, retrofitting some parts, which will only get us so far. And it didn't make it a week fully working. And it wasn't, it wasn't even a really cold week either. So, that unit does work in that area, the heating and the air conditioning for that portion of the building. So, that's what, on the quote, I have some questions about that. And whether or not the air condenser needs to be replaced, I don't believe that it does, but we'll take a look at that. So, the one thing we can't not have is heat to the building. Air conditioning, we could probably get away with. Heat, not so much. Certainly, pipes become an issue. Any other questions on the status report? Troy, that leaves us to Public Works.
All right. We did the trash again at the park. Roadside mowing's still going on. We helped with the food share at the Town Office Building. We finally put up all the Plexiglas in all the offices now. I think we've done a better job now instead of the first one. We can go to the last one. We fixed the gutter inside the crawl space that's been dripping. We installed a new chimney cap, and we installed a new cleanout door in the chimney where the new furnace was installed. We've worked on our, some repairs that we made for our trucks. We've patched holes around town, and we've washed the trucks after every little storm we have here. That's about it.
And they've been out for a couple of little storms. Did they get a whole holiday this weekend?
No, they went out Friday, they went out Sunday. Yeah, that was.
Happy New Year. So, thanks Troy to you and your crew. They certainly, you know, they're out there no matter what, all hours of the day and night. And so, we appreciate all that they've done. This list seems small compared to what I know that they've been doing. So, I want to extend our thanks. We don't see them enough, so I don't think they hear it from us enough. Any questions regarding Public Works? All right, I'll move on to new business. Our new State Representative Tammy Nuccio has joined us. And Tammy, you take office this week, later this week?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay. So, Tammy wanted to come and introduce herself to us and kind of talk to the board about some needs and concerns from the legislative perspective of Wellington. So, go ahead, Tammy, welcome.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I know a couple of you, but not all of you. So, I just wanted to come and introduce myself to you. I am the new representative for the 53rd District. And as Erica mentioned, I take office on Wednesday. So, I've been reaching out to all three towns to meet with their, either Town Councils, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, their Board of Eds, and their Planning and Zoning Commissions. Just to kind of introduce myself and to see if there's anything that you need me specifically or want me specifically to focus on in this legislative session. I'm sure all of you are aware, we have a major budget deficit. And there are a lot of initiatives that are looking to come online this year, things that will be debated, including public option, health legalization of marijuana, or over $2 billion budget deficit. And there's a program out there called Desegregate Connecticut that's really pushing pretty hard. Then, talking to a lot of the planning and zoning committees to understand where our towns currently are from a workforce housing perspective. There's a lot of things that are going to be coming up. It's easy to kind of get lost in all of that. So, what I'd really like to do is just kind of have a conversation with you guys for anything that you have that you'd specifically like me to focus on or just try to keep at the top of my list for Wellington this year.
So, I'll go ahead and jump in and start. There's been a lot of work done for several years, Tammy. You know, it affected Talend significantly as it does Wellington. That's a crumbling foundations issue. While there was money allocated and there's money in the $12 fee in insurances, it's not enough. It's not enough for the wave that we know we need, about another $100 million. And certainly, as homes begin to be fixed, I have a lot of concern that this problem will just kind of get pushed to the side, and people won't see its significance as the numbers become smaller. But, but it's something that we, we need folks to still fight for. I believe Pat, I know Pat sat on that committee, but I believe the seat that she leaves vacant is a partisan seat. So, I don't know that you'd be on that committee, but you know, everything that you can do to fight for, you know, Wellington, Talend, and Ashford as far as continuing funding for crumbling foundation and our homeowners, it's integral to our grand list going back to where we were several years ago.
So, I can give you a quick update on that. I am going to be on that caucus. I've already requested, I requested that like day one. They have not met yet this session, but I have met with Siffis and Steve Wergner to talk about initiatives that they have that they want to look at. They are proposing, the $12 homestead fee was supposed to go away. They are going to propose that it stays on for an additional 10 years. And they use that money to have a revenue bond. So, it would end up being about a $200 million revenue bond being funded by that $12. So, it wouldn't be an increase in tax, but it would be a continuation of that $12 tax for 10 additional years. Also, they're looking at the legislation currently that's out there. The abatements for towns are set to go away. And they wanted to look at extending those. The only pushback that I had on extending those is I think we should extend them, but I think you should have to have applied to get your foundation fixed or be in the, in the loop to get it fixed, to have an extension of the abatement, because I know how much that abatement hurts the town grand list. And if somebody gets on it, is on it for 20 years and never intends to fix their, their foundation, that's going to be very detrimental to the, to the town grand list and the people that are on it. So, finding a way to kind of link up that abatement process with, I'm in the application process, and I'm in line to get that funding. So, I did meet with them. I have a lot of notes from that, and I am going to be on that caucus. And I know this is probably our top, top issue for the three towns. So, it's not falling off my radar.
Great, thank you. Liza, John?
Welcome, Tammy. I'm sure we'll be in touch and hope to see a lot of you over the next two years.
Thank you. I am definitely open door. Make sure everybody has my contact information, my direct cellphone, so you don't have to go through the legislative aid and all of that. But absolutely, anything that we need in the towns, please reach out and let me know.
Liza?
No, I think, you know, the crumbling foundation issue is kind of at the top of our list because it has so, it has, it's a cascading effect to many, many things, including, you know, businesses being here and, you know, house values even for, you know, the houses that are not impacted by crumbling foundations. Everybody's house values decreased, and they're starting to bubble back up a bit now. But, you know, it's, it's been a tumultuous few years, to say the least, when it comes to, to all of that. And I think in general, just the financial support, you know, it's disappointing. There's, there's no aid to municipalities in this, the new COVID relief package. I know it's at the federal level and everything, but, you know, we in Wellington were, are always kind of scratching together our pennies to do what we feel like we need to do. So, all the ways in which we can increase support, financial support to get what we need. You know, we had this conversation about public safety and, you know, police presence and how that's tied to whether or not we can afford to have a resident state trooper specifically dedicated to us. All of these issues go back to, you know, the fact that we have struggled financially, goes back to crumbling foundations. It goes back to the way in which we're supported through state and federal aid. So, you know, it's a big issue, so not, obviously not something that's done within the, anybody's first week, but stuff to continue to work on.
I appreciate that. Erica, do you know if the town, if you guys have a list, a comprehensive list of the value of the homes that you're abating right now for crumbling foundations and where they are in that process?
Reach out to the Assessor's Office, and then, they do have some documentation they can share with you. I also want to, you know, state aid, our ECS funding, aid for education. It's vital to our community. Any cuts to that are significant. Being such a small town, those, you know, I think we all know in any given town, your general government and your Board of Ed often are fighting for the same dollars. It's important that we continue to get, to get the same level of state funding. Look, I know COVID has made things very difficult. But towns and cities still need the help that they needed before. If we're ever going to get through a COVID recovery process, never mind our normal day-to-day business. And listen, any work you can do to help with unfunded state mandates across the board. It's, it's everyone's pet peeve, yet they still seem to go hand-in-hand, mandate, unfund.
Yep. So, on that note, if I recall correctly, you guys are scheduled to receive $110,000 less ECS funding for the next seven years, correct? That's the schedule that you guys are on, the reduction of about $110,000?
I'd have to go back. I don't, I don't.
Either 110 or 130, I think, but it's around there. It's like in the, in the early 100,000s. So, I am talking to people already about proposing. They review that formula that they've put in place. I think we are, we are dinged unproportionately for, for the education piece of it. And my interest is definitely in looking at the state's obligation. You know, according to the Connecticut Constitution, it's the state's obligation to provide a free public education for all of the students that live in the state. And the funding mechanism that they have, the formula takes this base number, but then, they apply all these different things to it, which don't necessarily matter educationally, one of them being your net, your net grand list and AMI and a bunch of other stuff. So, I've been talking to people about trying to get the state back to a, what is the state's minimum compliance? What should they be providing at a very minimum for us from an education perspective? And then, for the areas that need more, you build up off of that instead of taking away from where we are. You know, you have to have a base that we can count on. And I feel like the, the formulas that they put in place and the mechanisms that they're using are penalizing. All three towns are losing money every year. Talend is like 330. I think you guys are 110 or 130, and I believe Ashford's around 64,000. So, I have asked that we look at that formula again. And then, from the unfunded mandates, I've met with Cave, their lobbying, the president of Cave and their lobbying group, and he's putting me in touch with somebody that can specifically help me from the state perspective for the unfunded mandates. That's a big one. The school unfunded mandates are bigger than the other ones, and that kind of really impacts us, especially because you have MBR. So, I'm going to start working with somebody to try to quantify like maybe the top 10 mandates that are hurting us smaller towns and specifically Wellington and Ashford, because you're a K through eight town. So, any mandate that comes through, that's a full year mandate, a full school, school K to 12 mandate, you're being unfairly dinged for that when you don't have that, you know, nine through 12. So, trying to find those mandates that are specifically hurting you guys, so we can then go through and kind of quantify how much it's costing us as a town, and then, finding other towns that have that same sort of K through eight atmosphere and trying to get buy-in. So, I am working on that one. It's a lot more elusive, though. Nobody likes to talk about those unfunded mandates.
No. It's funny, everyone seems to agree that we don't want them, yet somehow, we continue to end up with them. So, somebody's agreeing to them at some point. So, you know, there needs to be parties that take responsibility for it, but then, they just sit around for decades on the, that's what we really need to do, is take a look at that and how they can, you know, it hurts, certainly hurts big cities as well, but small towns like Wellington becomes a real, real big issue.
Yeah.
All right. Will you be holding, your predecessor held regular open forum, town halls? Do you plan to do that? So, I know you're reaching out to the boards and having conversations with this board. And I know you met with our Board of Finance, and you have others coming up. Do you plan to meet with residents so that they can ask you questions that they have?
Absolutely. I do that anyway for Talend's side, for the Talend Town Council. So, I'm just going to be, once I get sworn in, I'll have access to all that Zoom stuff and that, and I can set up a schedule. And then, I can do like a once-a-month office hours with each town. So, then, if a resident has anything, they can come to that. And again, I will be on social media and everything else, sharing my contact information, the website, the Facebook page, email address, phone number and all of that. But I will definitely be continuing that.
It's a great opportunity for, you know, residents, you're, you're coming to ask and different boards asking what we do, and we have a broader view. Some of our residents might have more specific questions. So, I think the opportunity for them to speak to you is important. We've been fortunate in the last two years to have great representation here. So, I look forward to that continuing going forward. All right, John or Liza, anything else? Tammy, anything else you want to share?
Nope, if you want to, for your minutes, my email address is going to be tammy.nuccio@cga.c t.gov. That is live, I think, already. I just can't access it yet, but I don't have the password information, but I will in the next day. That's there. And then, if you have any questions and you need to get ahold of me in a more urgent manner, my cellphone is 860-729-7122.
I know everyone watching our video will give you a call.
Yeah, I know, right? I keep getting a lot of unknown numbers now. But I may not, listen, I'm going to be honest, I may not answer right away when you call because I'm working or whatever, but leave a voicemail, and I will definitely get back to you. All right. Thank you, guys, for having me. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is a tax refund. There's actually two of them. And I see Janice is still on the line, so I may have a question for her as we go through these. So, I'll start with, I'll make a motion to refund Sarah E. Murray a certificate of correction in the amount of $236.51.
I'll second.
Seconded by John, discussion. I did have some questions, and I don't know if you all had the same ones as I. Janice, are you still there?
Yeah.
So, I know I asked you the question because this was from the 2017 assessment, and the next refund is from the 2018. And the rules governing refunds and how far back they go.
So, refunds can be done, I believe it's three years. I'd have to check with the Assessor's Office. In this case, she paid taxes in Wellington and in the town of Hartford, preferred to have the Wellington taxes refunded instead of Hartford. I'm not sure why. But those were the, the two years that she double paid.
If I recall, when we talked about this, she moved to West Hartford but never took it off the tax rolls in Wellington.
Correct.
So, we wouldn't have any way of knowing. So, I didn't know if either of you would have had the same question that I had had of Janice. I'm not used to seeing them go back so far, and there's two here, and that's why. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote.
Blessington?
Aye.
Buritz?
Aye.
Krasinski?
Aye. All right. I will move to refund Sarah E. Murray a certificate of correction in the amount of $235.91.
Second?
Seconded by Liza, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I will call for a vote.
Blessington?
Aye.
Buritz?
Aye.
Krasinski?
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Brings us to a COVID update. All right, so we currently have 125 total COVID cases. So, that's 21 COVID-positive cases that I guess we would consider active since our last meeting on December 21st. And we've had one increase in hospitalizations at that point and eight probable cases. So, I think it's no surprise, this is spreading. There is a new strain, has not been detected in Connecticut. But today, the governor of New York did say that they found a resident with a case of the new strain there. So, we will see what that means. I think the significance of this, from all that I have been reading and hearing, is it is just more contagious. Not seeing anything so far except for the level of contagion. So, we'll continue to see what that goes. So, I encourage people still, wear your mask, social distance, be cognizant of where you are and, you know, really staying inside your home bubble and recognize it. For some folks, their bubble may, you know, be a couple of households depending on their situation. And we'll see what the increase as a result of, they're going, the lights are going to move. What the increase? what the increase after the holiday break has done. Vaccines, we are still in Phase 1A. We haven't been told anything other than town staff, including, excuse me, volunteers, which includes our essential boards and commissions, would be in 1B beginning in February. There's been some talk about what 1B would look like going forward and a 1C. I have some strong feelings that our group is going to be moved to 1C, but we will wait and see for confirmation. So as of today, the governor reported the state has given out just over 75,000 vaccines. So that's to more than about 2% of the population and the state has 167,000 vaccines currently. Second doses began today, per Governor Lamont. And assisted living facilities began receiving COVID vaccines today. And all nursing homes are on track to have 100% of vaccine given by Friday. And the state right now has over, has 85 sites administering vaccinations. So again, I think I said last time, it's, it's a faint light at the end of a very long tunnel, but there's some progress being made, but what we can't do is let our guard down and, you know, still be cognizant of the fact that this virus is contagious. And although the majority of the population may not be adversely affected to it, there are those in the elderly population or those with underlying health conditions that could be significantly affected. And so what we do affects those around us. We have been fortunate as some town halls across the state have had to close to clean and quarantine. Knock on wood, we have not been affected here in Wellington. And as you know, we have not opened to the greater public. We are still by appointment only, and there's a reason for that. We've been continuously monitoring how we've set up offices, how we've made changes here. Troy mentioned to you earlier, he's just put up some new Plexiglas in the last office where, you know, we thought there was enough separation and we, you know, have really clamped down on, on how we separate from each other, but still need to be able to see each other. So, you know, it's a very fluid situation. We're continuously monitoring to see how we can change. The funding from the federal stimulus bill that gave us COVID relief funds expired on December 30th. So all of the funds that we received have been expended at this point. I was, we purchased items to help with cleaning PPE. We purchased air purifiers for this building. We most recently purchased several more webcams so that our staff going forward, they came in this afternoon, can utilize those. So as you see, Janice and Jenny on their personal devices so that they have a camera and microphone. It makes it easier for them to participate in the meetings that they need to. So now we have been able to use some of those funds to allow for that. I've made a purchase of some equipment to allow us to begin to hold, when we're ready, in-person meetings and be able to broadcast them from here. That equipment is forthcoming. We don't have it as of yet, so we'll keep you posted on that. But we should be able to use that when we need to have a hybrid town meeting. So I look forward to that. So those coronavirus relief funds made it possible for us to do those things amongst several others. Any questions COVID related? From the board? Any, and I would say, I know some people have used the chat. If anyone else had any COVID related questions, I'm not on the board. You know, I think if anyone has them and wants to ask, it's a great place for us to answer. All right. Well, seeing none. Again, I'm just going to remind folks, social distance, stay safe, wash your hands, wear your mask. It's what we can do. If there are residents out there that don't have masks, our Human Services Department has had some incredibly generous volunteers and have masks when they do food distributions. Often they have masks available, always they have masks available. If someone were to come here without a mask, we have both disposable masks and some wearable, washable masks available. All right, so I will move on to present to speak. If there's anyone else on the line who would like to speak, state your name for the record and I ask you to limit yourself to two minutes.
Erica, I was hoping to pose a couple of questions to Tammy, but since she's left the meeting, it makes no sense at this point.
Okay. Ralph, hopefully, Ralph Toulas, hopefully she will share her her information wide and we get it, we'll share on our town website so that residents have the ability to reach out to her individually as well as the town. And I look forward to her setting up office hours to meet those needs. All right, anyone else present to speak? All right, good and welfare. I remind everyone, the state has a portal, ct.gov backslash coronavirus for all things COVID related, including testing sites. We were just informed today that the priority testing sites that have been set up to include first responders and healthcare workers. I've been asking, along with my peers for months now, for public works to be included in that group. And I'm happy to say that they are, which makes it faster for them to get to the front of the line, to get a test more rapidly and the results back. So that too can be found on that website. Mobile Food Share is here at the Town Office Building. And Jenny, I hope I got these dates right, Wednesdays from 11 to 11:30. Twice a month, this month, it's the 6th and the 20th? Is that correct?
And new, yes, yes, that's correct.
So this Wednesday, January 6th, and then the 20th will be Mobile Food Share as well as bread available. And then that bread is available every Wednesday from
Every Wednesday, right.
11 to 11:30. Jenny does a food distribution. It's now moving to the fourth Friday of the month. So January 22nd, from 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. here at the Town Office Building will be another drive-through food distribution for those that need it. We've, we've had incredible support in our food pantry right now, so we're really able to help folks. The number seemed a little bit smaller around the holiday. And I often wonder if it's because so many people are generous come that time and we might see our numbers go back up a little bit off holiday season. If you can, please support our local businesses and restaurants. If, you know, if you're looking for a gift for someone, a gift certificate to, to one of those local small businesses would be a real help to them. Budget season is upon us. We had our first meeting today at 5:30. There'll be many, many meetings happening over the course of the next few months. So if people can reach, reach the town website and are to look for dates and the virtual links for all of those meetings and participation from all is welcome. And I want to take a minute, we met our new state rep today to thank here publicly Pat Wilson Finneas, who represented the 53rd District for the last two years and think of her dedicated service to the towns of Wellington, Ashford, and Talend. She was integral in getting some much-needed funds for after-school programs through the caucus that she was in that came into Wellington, and that was to the tune of $25,000 for the last two years. And spoke on our behalf many times. And I appreciated working with her and all that she did to help us. And I look forward to, to continued service with Tammy as well. Any other items, John or Liza, for good and welfare?
I, I just seem to be full of bad news all the time. I learned today that the town's postmaster Hazel Alfred passed away last week. I don't have any more information on it, but she was a nice lady. I'm sure a lot of people worked with her, especially those of us who spend a lot of time in the post office, so.
Can extend our condolences to Hazel's family and thank her for her service to us, to Wellington for several years. Anything else for good and welfare? This is a time where I'd love to tell you about all kinds of activity happening at school and you could go check them out. But as we get virtual activities help happening, we'll continue to share them in that manner. I know that there's a flocking, a flamingo flocking fundraiser for the eighth graders. So if you happen to see that and are so interested in helping, it's, it's been a great sense of cheer, not just for students, but anyone doing it supports the eighth grade, I believe it's the eighth grade dance that's handled by parents. But it certainly makes, makes you smile when you drive around town in the middle of winter and see a flock of flamingos on someone's lawn. So if you see them out there, it's not a sign of spring sadly. Is it Troy? Is winter over? Troy says winter's over, so we're done. All right. Seeing nothing else for good and welfare, I will move to adjourn at 7:00, now 12 p.m.
Second?
Seconded by John, so non-debatable matter, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, aye. Nobody ever says no to that. All right, thank you, folks.
And good night.